Testing one, two, three, testing one, two, three. Can you all hear me? Good evening.
Yes, can you hear me?
Good evening.
Hello, can you hear me? Good evening.
Trustee Maxie, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you. Trust now, I hear you. My bad, I have my volume down.
What have I done?
All right, we're gonna get started shortly. Good evening, Mr. Flood, good evening.
Glad you could. Good evening, Mayor, thanks for having me.
I hear you now, Mike. I hear you now. That's uh, thanks for coming out. Hey, good evening, Trustee Jackson.
Mayor Bryant, good evening.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Mr. Trustee Callier. All right, we're gonna get started real shortly. Just waiting to make sure everybody gets situated. We're back on Zoom now, so it's a little, it's a little different, so I want everybody to get, get their cameras adjusted, make sure your mic is loud or muted, whatever you have to do to get readjusted to this Zoom environment. We'll get started shortly. Trustee Collier, you got, you suited and booted for the Zoom meeting.
Oh no, that's your background. I thought, I thought, I thought we was dressing up. My bad.
Nah, that's your background, man. Going hard at home.
That's, that's, that's waist up.
Okay, the time is now seven ten, ten minutes after the hour. We're gonna get started with tonight's first regular scheduled council meeting of the year on January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. With that being stated, we're gonna, we're gonna go through some Zoom adequacy before we even get started with that, and that is one, just making sure and assuring that all of your devices are on mute if you're not speaking, all right? We don't want a lot of background and things of that nature to occur and interfere with the meeting. The second thing is, just please make sure that we're not talking over one another. It could get a little out of sync, all right? Especially, once again, we all in our own remote location, so just a couple of things you want to keep in mind. I, I do recommend and advise that all elected officials at least have their screen showing for the public and for the people who may be tuned in, if you are able to. If not, I do understand that as well. This, this Zoom meeting is recorded. This Zoom meeting is recorded and will be kept in the records for the public body, all right? So those are just some, some adequacy and some, some rules and some understanding before we get this meeting started for the people, okay? With that being stated, I'mma call this meeting to order. All right, it was seven, it was seven ten when I called it to order. I would do, does anyone want to do the pledge of allegiance? Anyone want to do the pledge of allegiance? No volunteers, I'll do the pledge of allegiance and the Lord's Prayer. We don't have to do it in unison for the sake that everybody's everywhere, right? All right, so I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lord's Prayer. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The din is kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Moving down the agenda, roll call.
Trustee Dyson. Trustee Dyson.
Present.
Trustee Maxie. Trustee Maxie.
Present.
Trustee Bruton.
Present.
Trustee Robinson.
Present.
Trustee Jackson.
Present.
Trustee Collier. He's there somewhere. Trustee Collier.
Sorry about that, present.
Mayor Bryant.
Present.
Administrator Washington.
Present.
Roll call.
A quorum is established. A quorum is established. One thing I forgot to mention in the intro is that we will remain remote for the immediate future as we see a uptick in COVID virus spreading across Cook County and Illinois, okay? So I do not have a definite timeline established yet. We will monitor it as it goes. We'll see how everybody's responding to that, and then we can talk about that a little bit down on the agenda items with the COVID nineteen policy and things of that nature, so there will be more time for discussion. All right, item number one, approval of previous minutes. We got a few tonight. We got November the eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, November the twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. We got December the ninth, twenty twenty-one, and then we got December the twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Clerk, are all of those regular scheduled council meetings, I don't know if any of those are special or anything of that nature?
Regular meetings.
Okay, so those are the approval of the regular scheduled council meetings for eleven eighteen, eleven twenty-third, and as stated by the mayor previously, okay? I give the board time to review that, and at any time entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Or any questions as well.
Mayor Bryant.
Trustee Robson.
We did get the, the minutes from Clerk Dyson and also Deputy Clerk Hill. I don't know if everybody had an opportunity, but if they did, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion for, to approve the minutes.
So, so stated, trustee, as trustee Robson said, I don't know if any other trustees need more time. If not, we entertain a motion. I'm sorry, Trustee Jackson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, approval of the previous minutes for eleven eighteen, eleven twenty-three, twelve nine, and twelve twenty.
Back in.
Moved by trustee Jackson, second by trustee Robson for the approval of the regular scheduled council meeting minutes, eleven eighteen, eleven twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, twelve nine, twenty twenty-one, and twelve twenty, twenty twenty-one. Any questions? Seeing and hearing none, let it be known by roll call, excuse me.
Trustee Dyson.
Yes.
Trustee Maxie.
Yes.
Trustee Bruton.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Jackson.
Yes.
Trustee Collier.
Yes.
Roll call.
All right, items moved. Going down to item number two, communications and announcements. Clerk Dyson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple of announcements today. Want to remind everyone that stickers, the village stickers are on sale until February thirteenth. We want to just remind the citizens to please get that before that time. After that, there will be a late fee charged, and it will go from thirty dollars to seventy dollars, so please be diligent and get out and get your stickers. The Village Hall will be closed on Monday, the seventeenth, for Martin Luther King Junior Day. Business will resume on Tuesday, the eighteenth, nine AM to three PM. There is a financial empowerment seminar this Saturday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, from one PM to three PM. Come and get financial advice about credit repair, taxes, and budgeting, dealing with foreclosure, and protecting your family. It is a Zoom meeting. The meeting ID is two zero eight zero three five zero six nine five. The pass code is six oh four seven two. If anyone has any questions about it, feel free to call the Village Hall, and we can give them this information again. That is all the announcements that I have for today.
All right, thank you, clerk. First of all, wait, I'm sorry, moving now, the agenda item number three, administrative reports, letter A, and under my top, I do want to ask too, is there any questions for the clerk for communications and announcements? I'm sorry, I didn't ask the board that, under that item. Is there any questions and comments for the clerk?
Clerk, we wanted to inform the residents that the trash day is changed from Wednesday to Thursday as well.
Oh yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Deputy Clerk Hill. I'm sorry, yes. A reminder about the trash day is pickup on Thursdays, not Wednesdays now.
No worries. I got the clerk's back. That's on my report too, and, and actually, the Flood brothers is out tonight to talk to the people and talk to the board. All right, so we'll get to that in a minute, but Happy New Year. Happy New Year to the citizens of Robbins. Happy New Year. Ms. Eccles is coming in right now, let me let her in. All right, Happy New Year to the board. Happy New Year. This is the year in which we will see a significant increase and a significant change, so I'm excited, very excited about what's in store and what God got in store for this village this year, okay? So, starting off with the State of the Village address, all right, the State of the Village address will be dropping this weekend, okay? The State of the Village address will be dropping on the digital platform this weekend, and the address is just me giving updates to the people on some key crucial items. That's what's going on. Updating the people at the start of the year, what have we been able to accomplish thus far? Some key questions about whatever happened to the forensic audit, right? A lot of, a lot of other questions that the citizens may have about some items that maybe we campaigned on, or maybe real estate might be another good question, right? So the State of the Village address will tackle all of these high priority questions this weekend, and I'm, I'm waiting for them to finish the edicts and things of that nature, and then I'll, I'll let the village know when that date, but be on the lookout this MLK weekend. I don't have a definite date of that, all right? The Flood brothers transition. All right, we have a, we have a, we have a, a transition going on within the village with our garbage. This past week in the Village Hall, we have been experiencing some turbulence, as suspected, with any transition, but the Flood brothers is committed, the Village of Robbins is committed to making sure that we service the citizens to the utmost, and it started with the prices, right? It started with new garbage prices that we, we was able to collaborate with the Flood brothers on, and, and, and starting with helping us clean up some of our, our, our books, correct? But tonight, I do want to allot some time to one of the owners of the company, Mr. Michael Flood is here tonight to address the citizens, to address the board, and to just show a face in any immediate questions we may have for him, or just be able to have this dialogue, initial welcome dialogue with the Flood brothers. So, Mr. Michael, welcome. I'mma, I'mma turn the floor over to you for a couple of minutes, and you can address the people and give a quick intro about yourself and the company.
Well, thank you, Mayor Bryant, and thank you, Village Board and staff for, for the opportunity to speak tonight, and the opportunity to become a partner with the residents and staff in the Village of Robbins. It's very important for us to become a community partner and aligning ourselves with communities like yourself that want to, you know, help out and work with the residents. Obviously, first and foremost is identifying cost savings. You know, we understand that. We are a family-owned and operated company. My great-grandfather started ninety years ago. We continue to be family-owned and operated. We're in a market that is considerably consolidated. We're fortunate to have over twenty family members in our business today that keep us thriving and keep our legacy going, and, and with that, we're able to control costs differently than the publicly traded companies that work on a national scale. Our focus is here in the state of Illinois, and first and foremost, the Chicagoland area. We, we service a hundred mile span of Chicago, and we have locations in the city of Chicago, DuPage County, McHenry County. Our corporate office is in Oak Brook Terrace. We've continuously expanded in the municipal market over the last seven years, and been fortunate to provide transitions similar to yours, so we feel we're pretty experienced. We've been, you know, in regular communication with, with Mayor Bryant, as well as Administrator Washington, on making sure that the residents that provide feedback to you, the trustees or staff, you know, comes to us, and then our field personnel, myself included, are out there making sure that, you know, the carts are delivered properly or removed if they were, you know, misdelivered. It is a transition, so there is going to be, you know, some form of hiccups, and we understand that. We've been through it. Our focus is to make sure that it, you know, gets eliminated quick and communication is, is provided. We have further information that we're going to send to the residents that's going to provide and highlight what the collection program is and how, you know, they can know what to put out each week for collection day, and when they have questions who they can contact. We've sent out an initial postcard, but the next list of information that'll be sent out in the next week or at most two will have the full, you know, packet information with that, you know, information for collection. It's kind of a little gist on, on kind of where I'm at and where we're at as a company. If anybody has any questions or concerns that I can be of help to tonight, feel free, I'm here to answer any questions as well as provide my information to you if you want to contact me at a later date.
Mike, appreciate you coming out tonight as well. Is there any questions for Mr. Flood? From the citizens? Any questions from any, anybody?
Trustee Maxie here. All of the, some of the neighbors, some of the citizens haven't, didn't get towed. How do we go about, who do we contact to get that information to them to get them a tow?
Trustee Maxie, are you referring to residents have not received any towed, or they are looking for an additional tow?
They haven't received it.
Okay, if we could get that information, if you can pass it along to Administrator Washington or to Mayor Bryant or both of them, I can also provide my email. I don't know if I can do it in a chat here for everyone to have or, or email everyone after the meeting, and as residents identify that they have not received a cart, we can get one out there as early as tomorrow.
Thank you. Will do.
Trustee Collier, I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, I'm sorry, trustee. Just to add to that, the Water Department and Building Department have been taking calls and relaying them to Public Works, and Public Works has been collaborating with Mr. Bobby Flood and their streets team to make sure that carts are delivered and things of that nature, and along with churches is being taken care of and other, other areas.
Now, I, I just had a question, Mr. Flood, far as trustee Collier here. Can you, good evening, how are you? The option to purchase additional garbage cans, is that available?
So, we offer the option to rent additional carts. Are, are you requesting to purchase a cart? Is that what you're stating?
Well, I believe with the last, trust, I believe you had the option to, yeah, to purchase additional.
We could, we could offer the option to purchase. One of the things when it comes to the purchase is carts, if, if there was to be an issue, whether a wheel breaks, the lid, you know, gets chewed by an animal, or sometimes somebody throws hot coals in a can and it burns, those then, you know, you own it, right? If you rent it from me, I can replace it in, in no cost to you as a resident. If you purchase it now, we have to look at, A, you've obviously paid that cost out. Now you either have to purchase another one or rent another one. So if you rented from us and something was to happen to the cart, I can replace that without having to take any additional cost out of the resident.
Do, do you have a price offhand, or how much that might be to rent?
I, you know what, I could dig into, I can dig into an email. I believe it was somewhere in the nature of three, three dollars a month, four dollars a month, maybe somewhere in that price range. I, I can, I'm not the best Zoom person, but I can try to dig into, to an email and identify that for you before we disconnect tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I do want to talk to the citizens with this, since we're still on this topic. Now, there is some transitional issues, not even on the Flood brothers' part, but on Tri-State's part, right? I do, I want to really clarify this. So it was a memo that went out by the mayor as far as your Tri-State cart and the Flood brothers sent a memo out too, that your Tri-State cart was supposed to have been left on the corner and the curb so for pickup from Tri-State. That didn't happen. As a matter of fact, I, I think, I think a good majority of the village still has, have an abundance of Tri-State carts, right? So with that, it create, it created some confusion, right? It was supposed to be a pickup from one company and a drop-off from another company, all right? So I, I just want to, I just want to let you all know that Tri-State is, is, their last time in Robbins was last week. They did come out here one last time upon my request to finish picking up the remaining toweds, but to what avail or to, to what success, I can't determine that. Now, my question to, to, to Mr. Flood, and, and even if we can't figure this out in this council meeting and want to talk outside of the meeting, is how are we going to handle, I don't know what you all been seeing on the routes, but just maybe some leftover Tri-State carts. I don't know the abundance of how many is out there. If this is something we want to talk outside of the meeting, that's fine as well of handling the Tri-State carts that citizens still have.
So, yeah, last week, obviously, being the first week of collection, there was, you know, some Tri-State carts still out there, and as trustee Collier alluded to, some residents had purchased those carts. Yourself and I have been working to try to do our best to identify what residents purchased carts and how we will continue to service those, and we can, what we've been doing is identifying, last week, our drivers were documenting addresses that had the, I think it was a signature yellow sticker or something there that signified that this cart was purchased by Tri-State, so we have a list that was just completed, just on the initial week collection, so I can send that to you, so you can also have it for staff, but we'll continue for the next week to service any carts that get put out at the curb if they are not just Flood brother carts, and then from there, you know, if, if, if you give us, you know, the authority, if Public Works wants to remove them from residents and bring them back to Public Works yard, or if you just want to have them disposed, if, you know, Tri-State will not come back and pick them up, we can remove them, so they're not just littered throughout the community, you know, but I think we'll know more this week than we did last week because it is the second week, and then, you know, have a better handle on that this week, and trustee Collier, the, the rental cost was three dollars and seventy-five cents per month.
Now, now, I do want to also add this as well, like, even with a transition, there's some pros and there's some cons, right? There's some pros and some cons, and I think some of the big is, information, misinformation that the citizens be getting is that, oh, I had three Tri-State carts, so now I automatically get three Flood brother carts, right? Or I had this amount of carts, I, I need another cart, and I think a lot of our calls at the Village Hall this week was that, hey, I, I'm missing the cart. Well, you got, you did get the original one Flood brothers towed, and when you transfer it to a new company, there's just some things you got to start and do over again, which is, in this instance, maybe buy a new tow, an additional tow if you need one, and that's just some of the, the, the cons when you transition. There's some things that is left over that you may not have. I, I understand that Tri-State might have took any cart, any tow, anything of that nature. I understand that, right? But when you dealing with new companies and when you dealing with new transitions comes different expectations and different things of that nature, so I am going to continue to work with the Flood brothers to ensure that whatever it is, the best service is geared towards and dedicated to the people of Robbins, and we will ensure that that happens, and we will ensure that everybody has a tow in a garbage bin to accommodate the trash in their house. Mayor Bryant. Trustee Bruton. Just a question for Mr. Flood.
Good evening, trustee Bruton.
Good evening. So just for clarification, if a person got a second tow, let's say, you know, it's four or five months, because I know this, it won't be easy to get people to just change their behavior like that, especially if your home been accustomed to having filling up two cans each week. What would that look like in terms of, would y'all continue to dump them, let's say, four or five months down the line? Like, could you elaborate on that a little bit? Would, would we have to, would, would be a price increase, or are you open to that as long, let's say, if only twenty, twenty-five percent of the community, you know, is constantly filling up two cans, that second one is a Tri-State. Some of them got the size, some of them don't.
constantly filling up two cans, that second one is a Tri-State, some of them got the size, some of them don't.
Um, so are you referring to residents that purchased a Tri-State cart or residents that just kind of acquired a Tri-State cart, maybe through the transition of people leaving them out or just over time?
Yeah, I'm sort of referring to the people who just acquire one over time, because I mean, some people going to say, oh, I don't get the stick on there, et cetera, or whatnot. I didn't, I purchased that so long ago, how you going to tell me I didn't? And it's going to be a hard battle to, you know.
And, you know, Mayor Bryant and myself had this conversation, um, I think last week. Um, and I, I think it's a fluid situation to where, um, we'll work with you guys. Um, you know, what we don't want to see is somehow everybody in the community has, you know, extra, you know, two, three carts, right? Because that's, that's not common from our experience. Um, but if there are those handfuls, we will identify and, and work with staff and, and, and the residents to make sure, whether it's us replacing the cart with one of our carts, so we don't have an issue of any collection process, you know, because their cart's different looking than our cart maybe. Um, and it will, you know, help the driver identify that I'm, I'm going to take this as opposed to, you know, a, uh, an old Tri-State cart. Residents are allowed to put out, um, additional cans, you know, if they, if they have cans from a hardware store. Um, you know, they, they can put those out at the curb with bags, you know, trash in there as well. Um, so it's not just the, you know, hauler, shall I say, issued carts, um, that can be put out at the curb.
Mr. Flood.
Trustee, who was that, trustee Robinson?
Um, I think someone said something before me, trustee Maxie was before me.
Thank you, trustee. Thank you, trustee, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Flood, yeah, uh, just for clarification on what, uh, uh, trustee Bruton was asking is for future reference for, for down the line service. If, uh, will you pick up totes that are, say, some neighbors that I know still have, uh, totes from Republic?
Right.
So if, if, that they use for, for, uh, trash or trees or grass or whatever, but they put them out there, will your company carry those, carry those totes?
So, yeah, that's.
Republic or, or.
Groom. Yeah, no, we, we, you know, Mayor Bryant and, and myself and our president, my cousin Bill and my brother Bobby, our operations supervisor, you know, did our, our assessment of the community, you know, that was something we all noticed. Um, and I think that's part of like, when, when the mayor talks about this transition isn't going to happen, you know, last week and it's over. There, these are the things that we need to identify that maybe have, have grown in the community where residents have accumulated, you know, more carts. And how can we make sure that, you know, we're providing the best service based on the contract that, you know, is in place, but at the same time allowing residents the, the proper service, um, that they're accustomed to. Um, so, you know, like I said, you know, previously, it, it is something fluid that we need to identify, you know, this week, and then next week we'll identify what changed from last week that we identified with Tri-State cans being removed. Um, but, you know, our, you know, we're going to put our best foot forward to make sure that, you know, if residents are putting things out there like that, you know, we'll continue to collect it. Um, and if there is a reason why we will not collect it, we'll make sure that staff knows as well as the residents are, are made aware of as to, and, and as to why we won't collect it.
Thank you. Very good.
I, 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 I assure, once again, the board and the residents that the Flood Brothers, it's a partnership with the village, and I believe this based off dialogues I have with all of them. They have been willing to, um, bend and willing to make sure that the services provided. Trustee Robinson?
You're muted.
Um, yes, so one of the questions that I had, one of the, um, citizens is asking in the chat, we have a couple of questions over there. Mayor Bryant, one from Sadia Mathis and one from Ms. Echoes. She said, will Flood, will Flood, um, disposal also pick up recycling? And I do remember in the contract that was sent to the village that it did mention, um, recycling and that basically you can throw everything in the one, um, container. So is that a separate container? Are you guys coming back with the recycling containers or does everything just go into the one tote?
So as of right now, it's, it's mirroring similar to, to the last, you know, contracts that you've had, um, where it's the, the one tote. Um, if we do see an uptick of, of residents, um, interested in, um, establishing a recycling, you know, more detailed program with, with a separate, uh, cart, you know, we can explore that with, with the mayor and staff. Um, you know, as, as we continue to kind of get settled in to, to the village.
Okay, and then, go ahead, Mayor Bryant.
No, go ahead, trustee, you got the floor.
Um, you know what, I was going to switch to Ms. Echo's question because she had a question in the chat in regards to, um, what can we put out without being charged extra?
Mm-hmm, yeah, um, so it is an unlimited household refuse collection program. Um, you know, residents can place out, like we said, you know, your issued cart as well as any bags or, um, additional containers, um, you know, household refuse. Um, you know, and then I believe, I hope I don't get out, but, uh, just going to verify, one cubic yard of, uh, do-it-yourself construction debris, as long as it's either bagged or in a container weighing less than fifty pounds. Um, one bulk item per week, so that's, you know, discarded furniture. Um, and, um, you know, so that would be the additional type of waste that we'll take outside of just that cart and not, no resident would be charged for. And, um, one thing we do, um, is if a resident puts something out, um, that we will not collect, our drivers, um, all carry, um, you know, what we call a sorry sticker. It's a pink, hot pink sticker that they will place on the container or the items and identify the resident to contact our office. And, um, you know, provide an explanation as to why that wasn't collected, so we can work with them and make sure that, uh, you know, whether it's tomorrow or, uh, the following week that, you know, we properly dispose of it with, with the residence, uh, cooperation.
Trustee Robinson, are you, are you fine? Are, are you done with the floor?
I guess, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Citizens, any questions?
I have a question, this is Administrator.
Go ahead, Washington.
Um, my question is for, um, businesses and other entities within the community that may have had services that they pay for directly with other companies and, um, some of them have received Flood Brothers containers, um, and so, um, I guess my question is, is, are, are they being charged now for Flood Brother services? Um, when they were already paying for a different service?
Are, are you referring to churches or multi, larger multifamily properties or, uh, businesses?
Even our library, our library was paying directly for their services, but they, I believe they have a Flood Brothers.
Correct, yeah, so, so, uh, in our contract, there were specific municipal buildings that Flood Brothers is providing service to, um, at no additional, no cost. Um, but I, I, I have it here in front of me, I can take a quick peek, it was, uh, it was the, uh, library was one of them, uh, the flea market, uh, the, uh, community building, uh, Village Hall in the police department, um, the Illinois, the Robbins, Illinois Resource Center, um, and then Public Works, all those, uh, buildings are receiving, uh, municipal collection at no charge. Um, so they did all receive a container. If they were paying for something with another hauler, um, you know, I, I was not aware of that. Um, or our team wasn't, and if we need to assist them in the removal, that was not part of the transition that we kind of, um, you know, we're, we're, uh, we're looking at. And then one of the things, part of the contract though, is, um, I think Mayor Bryant alluded to it earlier. Um, you know, places of worship, churches, um, are all, um, going to receive some form of a free collection, um, depending on, on the level of size that they need. Um, it was, uh, agreed upon that we would offer, um, one, two-yard cubic yard container, it's a container on wheels with pickup once a week at no charge to, um, to that place of worship church. Um, so we've started to receive some of those calls, um, not a lot. Uh, and, um, so if you want to, you know, let them know that, um, and we'll continue to work with them as our team's out in the field, um, you know, that they, they do have an option out there to save some costs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Flood?
Uh, Mayor, I do see one, uh, trustee Robinson got me connected into this chat, so I can do see a question came up from a resident, uh, regarding apartment buildings. Um, so, uh, in our contract, we are only providing, um, service to single unit or two-unit, uh, buildings. Um, anything larger than that would, uh, require commercial services. Um, so if, you know, there's apartment building owners or residents in, in apartments that would like to explore um, service with us, you know, feel free to reach out to our, our, uh, main line and we can assist you guys with that.
Mayor Bryant, I got one final question.
Go ahead, trustee Bruton.
I had noticed that the Richard Flower Homes had, uh, garbage containers, and that was like the first time I've seen that, so, uh, could you elaborate or have him elaborate a little on, on what's the process with that? Are we choosing to go in a different direction from previous years or something? Or was that just a mistake?
That was a mistake.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, thanks for that, no problem. Great job though, I'm excited about the transition, and that's it, thank you.
You good with me?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that as well, uh, great job, um, Mr. Flood, uh.
Thank you all.
I, I believe we are, it sounds like we're going to have a great relationship in the future.
Yes, thank you all, I appreciate your time and, and, uh, look forward to, uh, to helping you guys continue to do the great work you're doing and, and build the, uh, the, the community of Robbins and, um, you know, I know Mayor Bryant and, and Administrator Washington have my info. I'll do my best to, uh, to provide that to all, all you as well. Um, and if you have questions, uh, after the fact, please feel free to reach out, look forward to working with you all.
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate you.
Have a great night.
Yes, you too. Alright. So that was very important, um, once again, the transition is, is going forward. Um, it's the, the, the thing I want to keep hanging the hat on is that the village won big financially with this deal, uh, with the Flood Brothers, um, in which we, we, we cleared up some huge amount of debt with that, okay? So I just want the residents to know too that, um, uh, we're trying to win on all aspects and move the village forward with any deal and contract um, that we, that we pass, okay? Um, moving down on my report is the Robbins Channel Four, Robbins TV is up. Alright, Robbins TV is up and running, alright, um, so if you have that, um, SS, SS twenty-four or SS four, I'm sorry, please tune in, um, to receive those updates and videos, televisions. It's, it's, it's more like a television program than how it used to be back in the day with, uh, more of a PowerPoint facet, okay? Um.
Uh, question for, question for that mayor, trustee Collier?
Yes.
Uh, the, the cable service. In order, uh, to, uh, be able to view our access channel, uh, is it specific cable service that you must have?
Yes. Um, Xfinity Comcast. And, um, that's all I know. It might, I don't know if DirecTV has it, but, uh, Xfinity Comcast does provide Channel Four.
Okay. Thank you.
What, what about WoW?
I believe, I believe WoW too, I believe WoW.
I can get the channels to you trustees, I email them to you guys, and then also make sure they're posted online. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the website has a new, um, look to it, um, it's, it's pretty up to date. Uh, I, I need, I need trustees and, um, all, all administrative staff to make sure that you reach out to the communications department, so you all can, um, update your website and put whatever you need and whatever you want to communicate to the people, okay? Um, Ms. Noel, are you here? Ms. Noel, are you in the audience? Can you unmute yourself if you are?
I am here.
Ms. Noel, alright.
Yeah.
First of all, God bless you, uh, this, this moment is going to be strictly about you. Uh, last, uh, Monday, on January the third, uh, Ms. Noel turned seventy-three. And with that as well, at the start of twenty-twenty-two, this made over thirty-five years, not over thirty-five years of service here in the Village of Robbins. Ms. Noel has worked for several mayors, under Mayor Smith, under Mayor Brody, under Mayor Ward, and under Mayor Bryant. What a huge tenure and much respect, um, to you, Ms. Noel, on this accomplishment, happy birthday to you. And I just want to tell you, uh, from behalf of the mayor's office and behalf of the board, uh, we want to present you with a certificate tomorrow. I wish we was in person, I would have had it, um, present for you tonight, but it's a certificate that says congratulations on thirty-five years of service, and happy birthday, Ms. Noel.
Thank you, Mayor Bryant.
No, thank you, would you like to say anything?
I enjoy stretching the dollars for the Village of Robbins. I enjoy my job, yes. I appreciate you and the new board that I, that I'm working with, yes, yes. So I just, thank you very much.
We appreciate you.
Yes, much respect to the elders of this. Who's that, who's? Uh, much respect to the elders of this community, Ms. Noel. Um, you are respected, and I, I, I will, I will make sure that you get your honor, um, tomorrow when I see you. I have something down there for you, and if anybody else want to drop on by Ms. Noel's office, slide a birthday card under her desk, alright? Alrighty now. Moving on forward. I bet y'all didn't know this, Mayor Bryant is a grant writer too, along with my staff. We applied for the rebuild, uh, Illinois grant yesterday for three million dollars, okay? We applied and submitted an application, uh, for the rebuild Illinois grant for three million dollars, okay? So, um, we will be, um, waiting for those results and hopefully the village is awarded. Uh, the proposal that we did submit was, um, for the development of, of, of a multi-mixed commercial facility. Uh, I sent you all some of the, um, the visual conceptual art of something that we're trying to do, that's not hash and stone, but we needed some stuff to present in the grant, okay? Uh, this location will be at the Robbins, the Robbins Park District location, one hundred thirty-six, uh, five zero, um, Claire Boulevard, where the old grocery store used to be. Okay, so I, I do want to also tell the board and, and the citizens that even if we do not receive the grant, we do have another route for the funding. Alright, even if we do not receive the grant, we do have another route for the funding. Um, but we, we wanted to make sure that Robbins had their name in that application pool. And, um, thank, special shout out to my finance director, Mr. Kemp, and we got it in at eleven fifty-eight PM last night, the deadline was eleven fifty-nine, and we made it. So Ms. Washington, Mr. Kemp, we came together yesterday, me and Kemp was up late, late at night burning that oil, trying to make sure that it got in, so, uh, thank you, Mr. Kemp. Uh, also, thank you to Mr. Darden, Dr. Dart, I don't know if he's out there, but he provided some resources to the village and ensuring that we have some assistance and, um, understanding what needed to be done in that process, so thank you, Dr. Dart. And then finally, Ms. Mathis is in the, um, the audience, Ms. Sadia Mathis. And, um, this, this has been the longest mayor report ever, this started in New Year, so I have a lot to talk about, but Sadia Mathis is in the audience, and she is hosting her financial seminar courses, um, this Saturday. This is very important because she is preparing the citizens for the economic, uh, boom that's going to happen. Uh, so it's important that the citizens come out, Ms. Mathis, do you want to say a quick word?
Good evening, everyone, good evening. I just like to say that the event that's where, that's being held this Saturday is going to be held via Zoom. Is, documentation has been placed on the Facebook. Via Zoom is documentation has been placed on the Facebook. Please invite everyone out and also I believe I spoke with Mr. Not you, Mayor Bryant, but. The gentleman who handles the billboard.
Yeah, Derek Bryant.
Derek Bryant, yes, about having the information placed. For the Zoom meeting, again, that's gonna happen this Saturday from. One to three PM. Got about six panelists, all experts in the field of financial literacy. Look forward to having you via Zoom. You don't have to come out with the spectacle of it. You can stay at home in your pajamas. We don't care. We'd love to have you. Spread the word. We'll look forward to seeing you and to servicing the community.
Thanks, Ms. Mathis. And I'm and that concludes my report. I'm sorry. I feel like trustee Robinson right now with that long of ass, I apologize. We're gonna move down. On the agenda, is there a clerk's report?
No, no, no report tonight. We're gonna forego that for tonight, mayor. Thank you.
No, no clerk's report.
No, just we are still working on the Hometown Heroes Program. We have further details coming up in the coming weeks. I I do want to, yes, I do want to say that if any of the citizens are wondering why the banners are down. We did take them down because of the expected weather. That it was kind of beating up on the banners, so the. Producers. Of the banners suggested that we take them down for the winter, so they will go back up in the spring. If any citizens had any questions as to why they were taken down.
Hello?
Yes, that was it, mayor.
I'm sorry, I got booted out. I apologize.
Okay, I was just saying about the hometown heroes and letting the citizens know if anyone had any questions as to why the banners were taken down. It was a thing of trying to preserve them against the harsh winter that we're expecting and that we have had some really bad days. So they will go back up in the spring.
Okay, and then and then under, before we get to the treasurer's. Village administrator, did you have a report as well?
No, mayor, I think you covered it.
Okay. Letter C, the treasurer's report.
Mayor Bryant, this is trustee Jackson. I stepped in for trustee Bruton and had a video chat. This past Friday the seventh. With. Miss Moore. Finance Director Kemp. I I had just a couple of questions. About a couple of items, but. They're regular items. I just did not know, and one of them was. The Illinois Public. And the other was the village of Calumet. Now, the Illinois Public Fish Risk Fund, we all know. Now I do, it's the compensation fund that the village pays once a month. And the other item was the village of Calumet Park. It just says Calumet Park here, but it's the Calcom. Portion of our monthly bill. And other than that, it was just the standard. AT&T Comcast. And a few other items, small P I. If there's any, if you would like me to go through each. Or we can.
Not not at trustee, can you hear me?
I can't.
Not at this time. I think we got a letter item approval of warrant list. Later on the agenda, if we want to go through it, right now, I think let's let's the treasurer's report. You got any questions with the treasures? That's all right, Jack.
Well, thank you.
No, that's fine, trustee Jackson. Treasurer's report.
Mayor Bryant.
Yes, trustee Bruton.
And this echo what you said. Great job, trustee Jackson. Thanks being a great part on this finance team. There was a treasure report.
Hey, no treasure support. Standing committee reports. Standing committee reports.
I I'm always second, so go trustee Robinson.
Yes, Mayor Bryant, thank you, trustee Collier. You could have went, though. It's no big deal. So first, I would like to start out by saying good evening to the mayor, the board, administration and all the citizens. Happy New Year to everyone. This is our first regular meeting of the new year, and I am very excited about the overall direction. Of our village. As you guys can see, we already have. A new partnership with the Flood Brothers, and that's just the beginning of many new relationships. That we intend on building to move our village forward in the right direction. I believe that we're all learning something new each day. And as a collective team, we are very excited to do the work that is needed and necessary to revive our community. I would like to again thank the walking ladies and Mrs. Wilson. For inviting me to their New Year's Eve day party. They had a ton of questions, comments and suggestions. Thank you to Mayor Bryant, as well as our Public Safety Director Melvin Wells for. Literally taking my calls and answering my text messages with whatever questions the ladies had. They really appreciated that. Because it was New Year's Eve and you guys did not have to do that, so we appreciate that. They didn't let me off the hook, so I wanted to thank y'all for literally having my back. Moving on to public safety, in the fire department. Deputy Chief Malley contacted Walsh in regards to the ambulance repair quote, so they're gonna email. The quote over to him. Mia over at Walsh advised him that they were pulling it in and checking it out, and once they did a full look over. They will send that report over with the the quote for how much that is going to cost us. Engineer Jones is looking into a fire prevention smoke detector program. A few of our citizens have mentioned that at previous meetings, so we want to let you guys know that our fire department is actively working on a program for us. Yesterday, Deputy Chief Malley, he interviewed seven potential. Firemen and firewomen that may join our department. Moving on to the police, Chief Shepherd, he interviewed two lateral officers. So lateral officers are officers that are already. Certified and they don't have to go to the training academy, which will save the village money. They do have to be cleared by the state, but once they're cleared by the state, they can just go ahead and go to work. We also have five recruits that have taken the state exam. We are waiting on their scores right now as we speak. Once they, we receive their scores and they have passed, they will move on to become PPOs, which are probationary police officers. We have three new recruits that started the academy yesterday, and then we're gonna have nine more recruits starting the police academy on March the nineteenth. Of this year. Later on in this meeting, Chief Shepherd is going to present some data with about flock safety. I did forward the emails to the council board that he sent me in regards to just some data and information. About flock, so I look forward to that later on in the meeting. This next portion of my committee report has to kind of do with public works and public safety, so. I've had some citizens reach out to me in regards to street signs and stop signs that may be down or are like knocked off. So I was wondering if maybe we can have our public works department to canvass the village to see. If we need to replace any street signs, if we need to. Maybe lift up some stop signs that could have been hit by a car or something like that. Throughout the village. It's very important, especially if they're calling like nine-one-one, you know, people need to be able to see the street signs and where they're going. For ordinance and license committee, we are going to be implementing the municipal toll ordinance, which is something we talked about at the end of twenty twenty-one. Within the next two weeks, we have reached out to our attorneys in regards to this particular ordinance. As far as licenses within our village, we have some businesses that. Literally should have maybe multiple business licenses, and so we are going to be. Making sure each business have the appropriate amount of licenses. So for an example, at a gas station. They have gas. If they're selling food, that's an additional license. If they're selling lottery, that's an additional license. If they have clothes like retail, that's an additional license. So we just want to make sure that the village is, you know, retrieving all the revenue that it is due. There was a recent email sent out about. Local gaming machines, and so we're gonna also be looking to possibly implement additional fees. For the establishments that have that in accordance to. The Illinois State Gaming Board. So be on the lookout for the committee meetings for public. Safety as well as ordinance and license. We are going to also follow the same model as the village. And we're going to be meeting via Zoom, so you guys can get the updates. Either on trustee Tiffany S. Robinson's page on Facebook. And I will forward that information to the Robbins Connections group if you guys are there. And that is my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Collier.
Well. First of all, good evening, board. Good evening, citizens. Happy New Year to everyone. Trustee Robinson, thank you for that update as far as the science and all as well. I'll get with public works with that as well. My. My committee meeting is gonna be brief. What thing I do want to address is far as our snow removal, we're gonna discuss that part of the later date. But we we need help in this village to. Continue to update. Keep our keep our village in. Good standings far as the snow removal. We need assistance. They did the best they could out there with the limited amount of help that they had. And the limited salt. May I like to get with you as well to see far as. How we're doing. I know we did receive some more salt. And to see if we're gonna get some more as well, so that we can stay on top. As far as the next storm that comes in. But they, I I know they did the best they could out there. I was not too happy myself. We've summer streets, we had a lot of ice, but. At the end of the day, I do give them credit for trying to work their best with what they had to work with. So I know we'll probably discuss. The possibilities of help later on in this conversation, so I won't go any further with that. But as far as just keep up the good work in my public works, Wally Department. And right now, we all on the right track. We heading in the right direction and 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 I know all of us working together will continue to do that. Now, that'll be just the end of my committee report this evening, mayor.
Uh, trustee Collier, I wanted to say to you that I agree, and we've had many citizens complimenting. The two white trucks that the village has out there. That worked on the day that we had a lot of snow. Ms. Echols is also in the chat. Stating that they did a great job, and so it's Ms. Mathis, and so I think it's important because, you know, they are out there working. And even though we did not have the salt, many citizens stated that it was the first time that they were able to. Drive the streets without it feeling like they were struggling to drive, or you know, the streets were very sloshy. So yeah, great job to our public works department.
Yes, yes, they they did. Thank you, trustee Robinson. They 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 were on top of it. And I I did see the great efforts, but as you said, the two trucks to cover the village, they they were worn out. They were tired. You know, need to get there some help out there doing that as well, but. Just continue keeping up the good work with what with the great efforts that they are putting into it. Thank you.
To 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 even add to what trustee Robinson and trustee Collier said. Year one, a lot of things don't really reflect what we really trying to get to, you know what I'm saying? Year one. Year two probably won't even really reflect exactly where Robbins is trying to be at the mark which we trying to attain to, but. To the citizens, I I do understand the adiments and the sentiments, you know, that, you know. You see the strides, so I appreciate the fact that you all can can see the little noticeable things that it didn't take a whole day. Of snow sitting to go to go pile the streets or, you know. And it's it's just those little efforts and those little strides that the Brian administration is trying to achieve. Now, once again. Do I think the streets was like Orleans, or do I think the streets was like Crestwood or our neighboring communities? By by no means, by no means, right? But. We are on our way. We're on our way. Standing committee report.
And as you said, mayor. Our goal is to be self-sufficient. We are working on on getting the extra vehicles, giving them the help that they need with all of that, so. Like you said, we know it's not gonna be overnight. Situation. But. We are moving forward. We are moving in strides, and we we do see a better future coming coming, so just. Our village, our residents, everyone just bear with us, but it it's coming. It's coming.
Mayor, if I could piggyback off on that really quickly.
DA Washington.
Yes. Right when we had the first snow, we did unfortunately run low on salt, but Mr. Wells. And the public works department have been working diligently. We did actually receive forty tons of salt. For free from the county, and then we also have an additional almost a hundred forty tons. Is stored that we can now gauge how much salt we need going forward, and before we get low. The company will make sure that they drop off more salt for us to be able to store.
Yes, thank you to Commissioner Sims. Thank you to Commissioner Sims for responding to the call. Thank you, Commissioner Sims. All right. Standing committee reports. And just to clarify that, Commissioner Sims was the one responsible for. Dropping off additional tons of salt, all right, for the record. All right, any standing committee reports? All right, moving on down. Moving on down the agenda. There is no. Ordinance resolutions and contracts at this time. New business. Item number six. And letter A, approval of the warrant list.
Mayor Bryant.
I put motion on the floor with the discussion, discuss afterwards. I move for the approval of the warrant list in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and four cents.
Second. Great Jackson, trustee Jackson, second.
Moved by trustee Bruton, second by trustee Jackson for the approval of the warrant list in the amount of thirty-nine thousand. Nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and four cent. Any questions?
Well, I got a comment, Mayor Bryant.
Go ahead, trustee Bruton.
First, I apologize to the board because it was a little miscommunication with me not meeting with the administrative team on Friday and him meeting. I thought that he was gonna send out the warrant list, so I know it's on short notice, but it was sent earlier today, so if everybody had. To view it or get any questions, could direct them to trustee Jackson, and I'm sure. The administrative team, Ms. Washington is on the phone. Or Marlo Kim, we could answer him if there's any questions, but everything I seen, kind of like you said, was just regular bills. And that's a great job on your team in terms of we don't got a lot of just. Stuff on the warrant list. It's like we don't got money going out every window in a sense whatnot, so I appreciate that.
I do have a question. I noticed that there was the one that you mentioned, but right underneath there in that email that you guys sent us. There's an additional warrant list for five thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-two cents with about. Seven items that we paid out. It's in that same attachment, so it's like literally the third page. It has items on CJ C Johnson Associates, Core Consulting, Crossmark Printing, Frank's Repair, Mark Harris. And KNM Ventures. On that. On that warrant list that's attached to that PDF.
You're correct.
So technically, it should be, I guess, two. There's two separate ones there.
Oh, you're right, you're definitely right.
I believe what we can do is amend the motion and combine the totals.
Okay.
Amend the motion, combine the totals of the two warrant lists for approval. So there had to be a motion. I make a motion to amend approval of warrant list in amount of et cetera, et cetera. This happened once before in our council meeting. I don't know if you all can recall about amending the motion.
Mayor Brian.
Trustee Broden.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the approval of the warrant list uh from the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and four cents to change it to reflect the amount of forty-five thousand eighty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bruton, second by trustee Robinson to amend the motion of the warrant list to the total amount of forty-five thousand eighty-nine cent, eighty-nine dollars and twenty-six cent. Any questions?
Um I do, I have a question um about, let me go to this. The last line item, what um was the work that was performed by KNM Ventures?
What was that amount, trustee?
Um it was twenty-five hundred.
That was Longdale.
That was a tree cut.
Longdale House.
And then I guess the other one, um C. Johnson and Associates, who are they?
That's Mr. Johnson Building Department. That's his uh, was that nine hundred?
Uh yes.
Yes, that's his uh bi-weekly.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just the uh a question for the uh trustee Collier, just a question for the additional um, what is that, five thousand one hundred? With our first initial, those are just pretty much regular bills that come out on a on a monthly basis, it appears. These here were just some additional costs that just just occurred this month. But they don't look like they're anything that's on a regular on the average that happens far as with the five thousand. Is that what I'm looking at, Mayor?
Correct. I mean, every now and then you have miscellaneous things that pop up.
Right, miscellaneous, correct, right, right. Yeah, that's why I was just, that's the way, that's what I was reading. I just want to get on a clear understanding of what that looked like. All right, thank you.
No, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing it here now, let it be known by roll call.
Trustee Dyson.
Yes.
Trustee Maxie. Trustee Maxie.
Yes.
Trustee Bruton.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Jackson.
Yes.
Trustee Collier.
Yes.
Roll call.
So move. Uh I'mma I'mma ask for this next item. To defer it, uh we are still, let me just give a discussion about it right quick, though I'm not even gonna make a motion now. All that stuff, I'm just gonna talk about jumping to it. Uh we have been, first of all, we had a shutdown. I'm talking to not just the board, but to the citizens with this one. We had a shutdown s- end of twenty-twenty-one, start of twenty-twenty-two, the Christmas break uh from over over the New Years, right? And uh that was due to COVID. And with that shutdown, you know, I we we we, what's the best way to put it? I don't wanna, I don't want the village to ever have to go through a two-week shutdown period. All right, two weeks with the village being shut down doesn't give the access uh that the citizens need uh with some of their day-to-day needs. Now, I do understand, I wanna I wanna make sure that I don't get taken out of context because I do understand that COVID is real. I do understand that it is um sensitive to certain families and certain people who has been going with this situation. So I'm not, I don't wanna necessarily um talk from a standpoint as, you know, I don't, I'm against COVID or I I don't believe it's real and things of that nature. But the 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 purpose of this this item is that I'm working on with the independent company to give rapid testing to our employees twice a week. That way, we can keep the operations going, um at least testing-wise, is that we don't have to ever shut down again. You know, I'm not, we gotta learn how to manage COVID and live through COVID and not just shut down, right? And I'm gonna try my hardest, ask the mayor to keep the village hall open during this time. All right, I I think it's needed, it's pivotal through the through the forward motion of this village. Now, I put it on the agenda because I I I strongly thought that if if that we'll be ready tonight. But going and back and forth with our attorney, I I I just got something from attorney Frazier today that um she wanted some language change and things of that nature. So it it's not, it's not quite ready, all right? But um that is the, that is the sole purpose of this agenda item, is to make sure that we find a certified vendor uh with the state of Illinois to make sure that we provide a resource to our employees as they come to work on behalf of the village during COVID. All right, any questions?
Mayor, this will be on site? Would this be at the village, Mayor?
This will be at the village for employees only.
Okay.
All right, this is not for residents, this, I'm working on some with the residents with um with county. With Rita was something for uh testing with you all with the residents. But this is for employees and to keep the village hall open. All right, if I can get a motion to defer this to the next special or regular council meeting, um that that is the goal.
Mayor Bryant.
Trustee Robinson.
I'd like to make a motion to defer to the next regular or special council meeting, the approval of COVID-nineteen testing agreement with the humility healthcare.
Uh second.
Second.
Moved by trustee Robinson, second, I believe by Collier, trustee Collier, maybe, was that trustee Dyson too?
Yes.
Move uh second by trustee Dyson as well. Um to defer the approval of COVID-nineteen testing agreement with humility healthcare to our next regularly scheduled council meeting or special meeting. Any questions?
Mayor, when the uh attorney get through uh drafting this agreement, uh will we be getting a copy of it?
Absolutely.
Or discussing, okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'll make sure you all get that. There's some amendments we have to make, but the attorney is viewing these agreements. Any other questions? Seeing it here now, let it be known by roll call.
Trustee Dyson.
Yes.
Trustee Maxie.
Yes.
Trustee Bruton.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Jackson.
Yes.
Trustee Collier.
Yes.
Roll call.
So move, special shout-out to our workers who continue to come to work on behalf of the village. All right, moving on down, uh I'm asking, this is gonna be deferred as well too, cuz this goes hand in hand with that policy. All right, the Villas Robbins COVID-nineteen policy in which um letter C, which is based based off the um requirements as far as, how do I wanna word this? I'm sorry, let me get my thoughts together. The the policy deals with having a mandation from from the board level. For example, my school district, we mandate our employees that um you either have to be vaccinated. If you're not vaccinated, you have to at least be tested um once a week or twice a week, depending on what we mandate in the workplace. So there has to be some legislation passed from the board um that can bag up any policy that we um deliver to the to the employees, especially during this COVID-nineteen where where we have employees, they, you know, everybody had their opinion, right? Everybody had their opinion on COVID and things of that nature. But this is a public entity, a public body, uh you work for the public, so the government is controlling this aspect. So we we just need some legislation to pass to bag up our policy. And this will have to be deferred as well, because some of the policies deals with humility healthcare and things of that nature. So um if I can get a a motion to defer and I can answer any questions as well.
Mayor Brian.
Trustee Dyson.
I move to uh defer the approval of the um Robbins COVID-nineteen policy.
Uh so.
Moved by trustee Dyson, second by trustee Maxie and Collier to defer the Villas Robbins COVID-nineteen policy to the next regularly scheduled council meeting or special meeting. Any question?
Question.
Yes.
I noticed that the the county and the state are are giving out uh equipment like test uh kits and things like that, especially for the schools in city Chicago. Would we be uh privy to uh test equipment like that for our employees? Or is that something that we can look into?
Absolutely, trustee Dyson. Um I I'm working with state rep Rita um to to make sure we have these resources during this pandemic. Uh we should be doing a testing coming up real soon. And then uh once again, humility healthcare is one of those resources that we will be providing to our employees and making sure that they get tested twice a week, right? Free of charge on behalf, you know, taking care of on the village. Well, the village, the village would not be paying for it either. It's coming from the state, okay? So uh we still working out those logistics, but to answer your question, we are getting these resources.
Hey, uh any targeted test dates? You said twice a week.
Tuesdays, I'm looking at Tuesdays and Fridays. There are three days in between both of them. So Fridays and Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday is um Wednesday, Thursday, then Friday, it being that third day. So that's the the most equal I could have, I was trying to balance it, you know, cuz they say you got, they say you should wait about two to three days before you get tested. So that way, we don't have the situation in which an employee was like, well, I was in contact with somebody, but I gotta wait two to three days to get tested. I gotta stay home and quarantine, right? So it's that, it's that, it's that gray area that covers the village that, you know, you're getting tested every third day. So you will know your status uh consistently.
Okay, and I'm I'm sorry, did did we uh get a quote on the price of this uh testing with the community healthcare? Or is that a service provided through the county or?
Yes, trustee Dyson had a question. Go ahead, trustee.
No, that's it. Is it, is it, is it gonna be covered by the county or or what have you? Or or would it be a cost to the village for the testing?
There is no cost to the village. Uh they they've received their funding through the state, I believe, and 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 let me verify that uh when I bring it back to the board, but they received their uh funding through the state. This is a no cost village. And you don't need insurance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing it here now, let it be known by roll call.
Trustee Dyson.
Yes.
Trustee Maxie.
Yes.
Trustee Bruton.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Jackson.
Yes.
Trustee Collier.
Yes.
Roll call.
So move, letter D, approval of contractual agreement with KM, KN um Ventures for seasonal snow and ice removal. Yeah, I can entertain a motion and then I'll I'll have a discussion.
Yeah, Brian.
Trustee Jackson.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the contractual agreement with KM, KN M Ventures for seasonal snow and ice removal.
I'll second.
Moved by trustee Jackson, second by trustee Collier to approve the contractual agreement with K and M Ventures for seasonal snow and ice removal. Who wants to start?
Mayor Brian, I'll start this conversation. Yes, yes, I've been waiting on this item. Um the first thing that I wanted to say is um without due respect, you know, we're spending, this is a thirty-thousand-dollar contract that is going to be um over a three-month period. We didn't have any kind of like committee meeting and discussions in regards to um the contract. You know, we have flock safety out here like six times for a contract that's gonna cost like twenty, twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars that we have this contract with them over the course of of the year. I do have some concerns with this contract. One concern that I have, Mayor Brian, is that what if it's not snowing? You know, I think that there needs to be some type of clause, you know, in the contract. Not that I'm agreeing with it at all, but there should be some type of clause in the contract cuz I don't think the village should just be giving ten thousand dollars away. Now, I'm looking at the timeframe, so they went back to January the first. Today is the eleventh. We literally had one day so far where it has like snow, snow. So I kinda looked at literally the weather just for the next thirty days. Um and we can actually look at it up to the next ninety-day period that they are asking for this thirty-thousand-dollar contract. What if it doesn't snow? You know, um I know we can kinda look at it as an insurance policy, but you know, an insurance policy covers accidents that we don't know that may or may not happen, right? In this instance, we do know what the weatherman is going to say. Now, the weatherman may be wrong, but I just think that ten thousand dollars a month for uh snow removal, I think that's a bit steep. The other thing um that I wanted to say in regards to that is I would have liked to see us put it out there for maybe other people to 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 offer a bid on it. Um I know that right now, we might say we're in the middle of winter, but in reality, we knew that winter was coming in May when we got elected. When people took these positions, we knew that we were gonna have to have a preparation for this time. It's just like now, we should have something in front of us for the summer activities so we can kinda know how much money we're spending and we're not spending, you know, forty thousand plus dollars on the upkeep of the village, in which the village did look very good. But I just think that there are some things about this, just going back to the committee meeting, because that was something that um we said that we would further discuss when the tree removal and the snow removal program was mentioned before. So I think that we definitely should have had some other discussion surrounding it. It's on the agenda tonight for approval, and we're gonna talk about it right now. And you asked for a motion um to be made, and I just don't think that that's right. It's thirty thousand dollars. It's not like we're giving them your twenty-five-hundred-dollar mayor's discretion um nary amount that you can spend without the board's approval. It's thirty thousand dollars. So right now, we're almost halfway into the month of January, and we literally had one day of snow. Um when I looked at the weather going up until next Thursday, it's supposed to be one day of snow, which is this Thursday, it said forty percent chance. Now, we know it may or it may not snow additional days, but I just think that that's a lot of money. And also to not know like what someone else could have possibly submitted to the village, we don't know. Somebody could have maybe given us a bid for eight thousand dollars um to be able to do the work. The Public Works Department did do a great job with the two trucks. I do believe that we do need additional um help. I do understand that we're in the middle of winter, but we should have been and prepared for this. The other thing that I wanted to say to Mayor Bryant was, we talked about the opera funds. We had like eight thousand dollars appropriated for the trustee's car. I say eighty-six that. Scratch that, and we can put that money towards maybe securing another um truck that we can attach a plow to so that we can, as you and trustee Collier talked about earlier, move towards the village becoming uh self-sufficient and us having our own equipment so that we don't have to contract these services out. Because if we don't buy our equipment on our own, we're gonna have to contract them out next season and the next season. That's gonna be combined from summer, summer season to winter season right now. And we add two more of those seasons on for a total of, it's three months for each season. And we add two more of those seasons on for a total of, it's three months for each season. That'll be eighteen months. It's going to be over two hundred thousand dollars given out. We can literally save, maybe hire an additional body, purchase our own vehicle, you know, and move forward in that direction. And I know that we're in winter, but again, we could have prepared for this because this isn't the first time that we actually talked about this snow removal and this ice removal. The other thing inside the contract that they said, they said that they want the village to provide the salt. They're the company, why aren't they providing the salt? Why do we have to give them salt when they're asking us to give them ten thousand dollars a month for their four vehicles at twenty-five hundred dollars for each vehicle per thirty days? That's what the contract stated. Why do we have to give them the salt? Is that something that is, you know, standard in other municipalities? I did check with a couple, and if they contract out, they told me those contractors provide the salt. So why would we give them salt when we're barely able to get salt?
I'm gonna let, are you finished with all the questions?
Those are the questions that I had written down for right now, but should some other ones arise as we continue this discussion, you know, I respectfully wait and ask, you know, to be acknowledged. But we do need to have discussion, and I just wish it was, you know, not just right now in the council meeting. I wish we would have had them to come out, even Melvin Wells, who's the Public Works Director, so that we can ask them specific questions instead of just getting the answers from you, Mr. Mayor.
Point taken. Now, let me respond, I've been writing down, trying to keep up, so there's a lot of questions. The first response to just this making the agenda without the committee meeting, okay? We are the corporate authorities that has governing powers by IML. The legislative body has the power to deny any item that makes it to the agenda and send it back to whichever committee it needs to be. The mayor has the executive powers to control agenda items and to put things on the agenda and to even post an agenda with the clerk, okay? So that's this, I understand process and procedures. I understand that a committee would have been a route to take, but this wasn't a wrong route to take, it was within the powers of the mayor. The second thing is the bidding, the bidding with also within the powers of the corporate authorities that you do not have to formally bid every contract out with a two-thirds of the corporate authority votes. With two-third votes, you can bypass the formal bidding process with the corporate authorities, okay? So that is also, I don't want every, I don't want people to think that everything has to be bidded. No, we can approve with majority, okay? Then it talks about village providing the salt. Now, let me go back to this past weekend or two weekends ago where there was snow. We had help out there. And it wasn't K N M Ventures, okay? It was Robbins Residence, actually. It was two Robbins Residences that had their independent company that assisted us that night. For the record, that one night with just two independent Robbins employees or contractors cost us five thousand for one night. For one night. So we gotta, let's start thinking about ten thousand for thirty days. You know, you know, it's, that's a self-explanatory. So I do want to also say this, even talking with the, oh wait, let me go back to the independent contractors again. Five thousand for one night, and it didn't cover the whole village, right? Snow removal is, is not a cheap expense. What we have on the table, citizens, is in board, is for someone, a group, to provide four trucks to the village, all right, to respond twenty-four hours, whenever we call, for the whole month, no matter how many times. All right, so we're not getting charged separate times. Now, there is a time with trustee Robbins' state, we don't know the weather. And this, this was the same question that I asked the independent contractors, K N M Ventures, was, well, how do we know it's going to snow? And the response was, and once again, this can go back to committee, so you all can hear it, doesn't, you know, but the response was that, you know, you just can't call, and I, I agree. You just can't call nobody the night before you see it's going to snow or the week of and say, hey, it's been a snow, come out to Robbins, right? You gotta be able to secure business. You gotta be able to secure longevity. Sometimes you gotta take, this is what it is. The, the pro is you get insurance twenty-four hours, the con is, you don't know, I pay mortgage insurance. I don't plan on having no fires no time soon. But that's just some of the things with the cost and the risk. Now, even going down to being self-sufficient. Me and trustee Collier had a great conversation about being self-sufficient, and that is the goal. But even with that, we're in the middle of winter, I don't want to make a hasty decision with this buying equipment. I want us to take time and make sure we get the right stuff we need. Because what we don't, what we want, what I want you all to know is that one of the trucks, just talking to the public works director, one of the salt trucks that we have, the snow removal trucks, is not even all-wheel drive. And that's what's needed for some of our pile trucks that we are financing currently. They're not even equipped to handle the equipment rather that is supposed to endure. So we have the financing for that. We have a financial strategy to attain that, and that could be gotten, okay? And then finally, the budget, okay? Each trustee, not just each trustee, but even the staff from the legislative assistant and VA, I want to make sure everybody's in this, had a deadline on November, I believe it was the fifteenth or the twenty-fourth or something like that, to submit budget items as far as how's ARPA should be spent. The only one that submitted something was the mayor. So I just want to let that be known for the record, that I set aside twenty to thirty thousand for snow removal two months ago for this approval before the season hit. But let it be the board's pleasure tonight on whatever needs to be done. And I'll stand united with my board like always. That's all I have to say about this topic. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor, trustee Collier. I would like to piggyback off of that. First of all, trustee Robinson, all your points, well-taken. I truly understand all your concerns, but I want to give a reason why I will say yes to K N M myself personally. I came in contact with them over the summer. I've seen this company out there working voluntarily for this village. So it looks like several, a couple of the residents were, the employees are residents. This company, I believe, has a heart that's strong into this village, and they want to make this village work. I don't see them trying to really mess us over anything like that, especially since I've seen them out there working voluntarily, trying to help out for this village. One thing I was really impressed is that when I seen, when we had the back-to-school parade, they were out there cutting down trees, just cleaning it up, just trying to make it look good, really trying to look out for the board, trying to look out for the, for the village. They see what the administration was trying to do, the board members were trying to do, and they said they was just trying to do their part. So I was really kind of shocked when I seen this come up. I guess I wasn't shocked, but to see that they are still trying to assist us and trying to move forward, I understand your concerns about the pay and about the, about how much we're paying. But, but the mayor brought up a valid point far as insurance. This is an insurance policy, you pay an insurance policy, yeah, you may not use that, use it, utilize it, get anything from it, but it's an insurance risk that you have to take. So I can kind of understand from that different aspect. But I personally feel like this company will go above and beyond to make sure that this village looks good at the end of the day and is doing their part. So that would be a reason why I would vote personally yes for this company because I do have some familiarity with them. I haven't heard of anybody else bidding and trying to give their assistance. So I'm, I'm one hundred percent backing up this company.
Thank you trustee Collier. You're right, and that's why I said we need to put it out there so we can see who else has something to offer. If we don't put it out there, how are we going to know? And then you guys are referring to this as an insurance policy. I kind of see it as there's different ways that you can have this contract. It can be a seasonal contract, it can be an hourly contract, it can be by event contract. They can still know that, hey, we're on call for the village of Robbins in the event that it does snow. I just feel like giving them ten thousand dollars a month, and we're looking at the track record of the snow. We're almost two weeks in, and we literally had one day, you know? Thank you to them for volunteering their time to shovel the snow. A lot of residents do that on a daily basis, so it is commendable, but still, ten thousand dollars is a lot of money. The way the contract is set up is set up just for the three months. The contract could have been set up in a different way. It didn't have to just be set up the way that the contract is set up. That's what they actually proposed to us. And then Mayor Bryant, to your comment about the ARPA funds, how we were going to spend that. Yes, you did say you were sitting aside twenty to thirty thousand, but also there was a question at that time, what does the budget consist of? We had this conversation with Melvin Wells. We asked him, and you want to know what? This was like back in October or whenever it was, this is three months ago. We asked, what does that consist of? How do we know how much money to appropriate? And we don't even know what we're appropriating money for, like seriously. And we asked, is it for salt? Is it for equipment? What is it for? Nobody ever said anything, so you can't give a number to something when you don't even know what you're giving the number for. I'm not a public works person, so I really don't know every single thing that they need. But I just think that this was, it's a pretty steep number, and I think that we should have handled this process just as we have handled other processes that the contracts are in the tens of thousands of dollars as well. That's my only thing. We do need the help, but we knew we need, we knew we needed this help. We have winter every time, every year, the same time in Chicago. Winter doesn't change. It starts November twenty-first and it goes through March. Like, we know that we have this time coming up. It doesn't change, it's been pretty mild. We didn't even have no snow in the whole month of December. That hardly has ever happened in my forty-two years of being in existence. So we don't know, and that was the reason that I was really skeptical about the cost. It wasn't about really rejecting them doing the work, but it was basically how this came about. You're right, it's within your power, but at the same time, let's be fair, we're on an equity committee, Mr. Mayor. You and I are, and if we're going to be fair about it, we need to put it out there so other people can actually make a proposal. And then also, to be fair, the building, the department, Public Works, they need to tell us what we are, what we're giving them, you know, like the budget for. You can't just say we need fifty thousand dollars. We have to actually say what we need, what that money is needed for. So that was my, my concerns with that. And then, Mr. Mayor, is he here or is he gone?
I'm here.
Oh, you're here? And then you said that we can use two-thirds of the votes to bypass, like, when did we vote? I don't even remember voting on this.
No, once again.
Did I misunderstand that?
Yes, that's in response to, that's in response to formal bids and needing a bid, the corporate authorities can pass something through. They don't, everything don't have to be a formal bid. So that's why, that's why it's on the agenda tonight.
Yeah.
Mayor Board.
Mayor.
Trustee, I heard Maxie first, trustee Maxie, then trustee Dyson.
Yeah, just a, just a question based on what we're talking about here. A few of the trustees have already discussed this, but, but just a question. If we're, if the objective is to build a public works department, get the equipment and everything for the public works department, thirty thousand dollars could not have gone towards a truck. We could pay ten thousand dollars a month for a new truck as opposed to lease to hiring an outside contractor to do the work for us. Just a thought.
Then you, then you add, you gotta have personnel too, then overtime.
Go ahead. Personnel too, okay?
You add personnel with that and, you know, overtime too. Now, for the record too, this is not really on the topic. I just got pulled into the office today by employee that is frustrated with the amount of pay that they're receiving, right? So we're already underpaying people, you know, and we're already not, they're not trained. They're not trained to even drive some of the equipment, you know? So once again, until we get self-sufficient internally with making sure that we have proper training and making sure that, you know, I, I, see, this is one day I gotta, I'm starting to realize with myself, I do want to put Robbins to work. I do want to make sure Robbins have opportunities. But at the same time, I want to make sure that we get an efficient job. I want to make sure that we get exactly what we need. I want to make sure that, you know, that it, it is, it's, it's a high quality. And I'm not throwing shade on my community, but my community is at a forty-one percent poverty rate. So with that, you're going to have to expect that if you're going to hire them, we'll have to come a lot of more support and resources. So it's just not as simple as, well, we could have hired more people to do this. Well, not necessarily. I mean, I could have hired a whole bunch of people, but now I'm stuck with, how do I get them up to par? And then when I get them up to par, they should be getting paid close to fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour to operate some of this equipment. So it's a lot of things to, that we're just trying to make it through year one. This is not the goal to be outsourcing grass and snow. It's not the goal to be outsourcing these necessities that we see every year. But once again, in year one, it's buying us time to get ready to build that. You know, we hired three Robin, Robin Knights in the Public Works Department, and they're doing okay. But once again, it's, it's more complex than this, oh, we could have hired some people for this. I could, I could hire all of Robbins tomorrow right now. But is that what we need?
How many people do we have working in the Public Works Department now? That could, that could be trained to do the type of work that we're talking about?
We got five.
None of those would be trained? None of those could be trained to work on that, on equipment that we buy?
Two, one of them, one of them, two of them needs to. Think about this too. One of them pile snow is from the water department. So we have the pool from the water department for that. You know, it, it's, it's more than this jumping in the truck and pile snow. Trustee Bruton can attest to that. You just can't pick people off the streets and then tell them, go pile the streets of Robbins, get behind the pile truck and go pile streets.
No, man, I guess they train.
Yeah, I can contest to that as well, Mayor, because I've been out there volunteering myself with Public Works to, for snow removal. And you, you gotta be trained properly in order to do that. They, in the past, our equipment has been torn, torn up with the, it's kind of why we in the situation we are right now. So we got to have the right people out there, and they train properly in order to use this equipment as well.
I can, I can go, I can work with that, but when do we start the training? We're talking about it, but when do we start? You know, we got, we got the people hired, when do we start training them? We could have had them trained for that.
Well, we're, we're, we're training them now, but I also.
Yeah, we're training them right now as we speak.
Yeah, how many people, you gotta understand this, we don't want to have an influx of training. We don't want to have an influx of new hires that we have our department is unskilled. And then it's like, honestly, with, with you all, it's like, I don't understand sometimes the, the, the perspective, because at one minute we got training, and then the next minute I got trustees sending me videos of employees or public works people that might have ran over a ditch, and this is, this is facts, right? Of trustees sending me pictures of this, that they shouldn't be behind the wheel and all this. And this is, this is facts, right? Of trustees sending me pictures of this, that they shouldn't be behind the wheel and all this other stuff. So are we training them or are we not putting them behind? I don't, I don't understand.
I think that would be a question for um, their supervisor, Mr. Melvin Wells. He's the one that's responsible for them brothers, the women and men, or whoever is out there, Mayor Bryant. I mean, honestly, even if we didn't say, say, let's just go back to this contract, because we're talking about bringing in outside help. All right. So we're bringing in outside help. And if other people had the opportunity to, to even be aware that the village was looking for people, people that are going to apply probably most likely have their own business. So there are other qualified people out there, I believe, even if I don't know who it is right now, that could actually do the same thing. The other thing that I wanted to ask you, uh, Mr. Mayor, so with their, with their four trucks plus the villages too, that we already have, do we need six trucks out there?
Yes, because as we all just stated, the streets are not where we want them to be. Secondly, I just went to Robbins last week, different vendors in Robbins. I, I started off by saying that I went to other Robbins last week and got charged, it was five thousand for one night. So once again, um, the, it's on the floor for a vote, honestly. The, the board has the power to vote this tonight or send it back to committee. It's, it's, it's really the board's pleasure. You know, I, I have my stance, I have my stance on this and I, I stated what I need to state. Trustee Dyson, trustee Dyson.
Yeah, my main concern was the uh, the financial, how are we looking? Yeah, can we afford this for number one? And the reason why I ask that is because I know that we're going to be facing some legal challenges real soon. And it don't look good. So what I'm saying is that, do we have the money uh, to basically just almost give away? Because like you said, we don't know how uh, much snow we're going to get. Uh, and just to say that we're going to give away ten thousand dollars a month, uh, that, that, that's a little steep. So that's my concern. The other thing is that uh, when we first came into office, uh, we knew that the village was leasing some equipment and the leases was going to be up or expire in, I believe it was October. And that, that point has been brought up way back in the springtime. Uh, why wasn't this kind of a, addressed back then? As to try and bring the equipment that we need, hire people that we need, stuff like that. Because like trustee Robinson stated, winter and summer is going to come every year. Um, are we going to have a public works department with trained people uh, with the equipment that we need? Or we just going to continue to spend money and, and really uh, have, have very little to show? That's, that's my concern. We shouldn't have gotten to this point.
The leasing.
You don't, you don't contract uh, a, 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 a snow uh, removal in the middle of a snowstorm. I mean, we, we could have been talking about this back in this, uh, at least the summer.
There's a, there's a lot of things we should have been doing, but I don't want to go that route. But one thing I do want to do is this, that leasing, the leasing contract is not, is not up. The leasing contract, we pay an annual seventy-two thousand dollars uh, one time per year, okay? The leasing contract is not up. And the reason why we haven't revisited yet is because the same company um, that we leased these vehicles with, it's the same company that I'm waiting to pull the trigger on for the financing of our commercial development. And at that time, we'll be able to get everything that we need at that time. That's, that's what I was waiting. That financing has been presented to the board. It has been presented to every trustee. You all have the power to bring stuff to agendas too. You know, so I, I given, in, for the citizens, for the record, for the citizens, it was four million dollars. A finance option of four million dollars presented to the trustees back in the um, I believe September-ish um, month area. So there, it's been presented for financial options. It's been presented. But if, but if we're going to follow my plan, I was waiting to pull the trigger on that when we, when we take it out for our commercial development. But I mean, the time is now for the board to decide if this is going to send it back to committee. And trustee Dyson, you are right, you know? You don't, you don't, you don't, you don't do this in the middle of a snowstorm, but now we're here. And now it's time to make a decision. So is it going to get voted or is it going to go back to committee? And it's the board's pleasure.
Mayor Bryant.
Trustee Bruton.
Yeah, Brian.
I'll let Jackson go first.
Trustee Jackson.
I just have a couple of questions about the contract itself. The contract state that snow above two inches. Can you help me with below two inches? And I'd like to know, uh, how is this snow measured? Is it measured out at O'Hare, which is the official site? Or is it measured in Robbins? You know, uh, because two inches is a lot of snow. And if we don't got, wha, 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 does Public Works handle the snow at, at below two inches by themselves?
Well, I get a direct call from O'Hare Airport um, every morning, Jack, of the weather, all right? So we getting a fit, no, seriously though, you, you don't bring the snow piles out under two inches, but go ahead, trustee.
I, well, I understand that, but what happens with the snow that's laying on the ground at two inches?
Public Works should be able to handle that and then they still come out and ice the streets. There's still certain things that can be done besides piling.
Mayor Bryant, it, it says four trucks here and it states in the contract clearly twenty-five hundred dollars per truck. One of the trucks go down, they, they give us a pro rate or do they just run with three trucks, trucks and still get paid? Because, I mean, we looking for optimum service for the kind of money that they want. This is uh, this is thirty thousand dollars. And if they're going to remove snow, don't you think we should have, you know, the agreement that if, if they have three trucks, we save money? Because in the contract, it says they are here to assist the public works department. So
Mayor Martin said it was they only used two trucks.
Look, like I stated, we can send it back to committee or we can vote it tonight. It's like, that, that was a valid question, Jack, about the truck going down. I'll say that one. That was, that's probably one of the best ones tonight about the truck going down.
Well, thank you.
They were all great questions, even if you didn't want to hear them, Mayor Bryant. They were all great questions. We represent the citizens. It's a great question. I would like to see this go back to committee though, for further discussion, because obviously there are some other questions. Um, in that meeting, I like to see Kay and M be there to, to answer these questions because they're the ones that propose the um, the contract.
I agree with that. I'll agree with that as well, trustee Collier. I agree with that, uh, trustee Robinson. I mean, um, I think there's a lot of pros and cons to this. And uh, as a whole, I think we should sit down and come to a, a standard agreement as long with, with them as well. So I agree with that.
So, so with that, there was the motion on the floor. So what I advised the board to do, vote no, and then the motion would kill. And then from there, uh, uh, make a recommendation to send it back to um, a specific, whatever specific committee that it will go to. Make sure that's on the record and also give a, also for the record, give, give a date on when that meeting is going to happen. All right.
Um, do you need to check with them to see if they're, if they would be available to come out as we did? The other contractors that we have contracts with?
They'll, I'm pretty sure they'll be there.
Okay.
See, any other questions? See, trustee Bruton?
Yeah, I was just gonna make my comments, but uh, but I respect everything from both sides of it. Um, I really, really love being a part of this board because this is a tough board. And it's good that the village got people sitting in these seats like that. Um, but I also respect you bringing that to the table. Um, I can see both sides of it. Snow removal is a different beast. Um, first and foremost to, like, like, just to say, like, it was only snow one day. When you kept calling me all that night, et cetera, and whatnot. But if you gotta plow the streets all night, off and on, yeah, you go go take a rest. But let's say like that was a storm, that's twenty-four hours straight. So most people work eight hours a day. Do we consider that one day or is that three days' work? It's a different beast and you have to be then done that type of work to really understand, like, it's really a different animal. Also, and when I say it's a different beast, because it's on call, you could be out with your wife. I mean, the other day, nobody really knew that was going to turn into ice rink like that. Uh, which granted this contract is, we, it need to be revisited because obviously we don't got them coming out in that case right there. Uh, but let's say you send out your wife one night and it turned to ice rink, you gotta go, service the village. Um, so it's a different pay scale where a person is working on call. You get paid for your convenience, whatnot, the, the, the pay rate go up. And again, it ties back to our duty, our number one duty is to provide basic government service. So pu, public, I mean, uh, public safety, granted, you know, policing and all that. But I'll argue that keeping the streets just to say is, is, is public safety too. You know, so that's a, that's, that's public service, whatnot. And I mean, Mayor said he had thirty thousand sent to the sad, whatnot. Like I say, I could argue that that's a different beast. Um, if you got a company, I, I would like them to come pr, present to us and all that, whatnot. But i, if we not in that business, I don't really know that we could make that judgment to say that ten thousand is a lot. When we talking, and then granted, I understand, you know, this is the village, whatnot, you know, but I, I understand both sides of it, but I, my final conclusion is that I think that we're going to have, I, I would like to see a clause stating that if we don't get no snow, matter of fact, put it this way, a clause stating that if we only get X amount of snow, then we only pay X amount. That's the one thing I'm not liking, whatnot, because they right, like trustee Robin said. What if we really don't get no snow? So our duty is to do what's in the best interest of the village, no matter what. So if we don't get no snow, then we need to be trying to save the village a dollar. I know that was a lot to say, but that's all I got to say.
So way, way to conclude that voice of reason and voice of balance, okay? Way to conclude this segment, trustee Bruton. With that, we, I entertain a, a, a vote um, to um, the board's pleasure.
Motion's on the floor.
Yeah, it's on the floor. Kirk Dyson, roll call.
Trustee Dyson?
No.
Trustee Maxie?
What are we voting on now? Whether to send it back to committee?
No, you, no, the vote was to approve the contract.
No.
Trustee Bruton?
No.
I'm sorry. Trustee Robinson?
No.
Trustee Collier?
With the uh, I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote no to move forward to our, this, for the structure.
Okay, and trustee Jackson?
No.
Roll call.
Item denied. The item has been denied. Uh, with that denial, uh, I do make a recommendation that this item goes back to the public works committee uh, for a, a meeting in the near immediate future, uh, rather than later. Um, Chair, Chairman, trustee Collier? Chairman, Chairman Collier?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
You okay over there? I was just trying to see, um, is, um, would there be a meeting in the immediate future or?
Yeah, we will, we will, because I, I do want to go further in details because once again, like I said, I, I am uh, because it's such a last minute, uh, I do feel, I feel truly highly that we, we need them. And I feel like they would do a great job for us. So I, I do want to put this back on the table to discuss this. I understand the fact that uh, there may be some details that we do need to discuss and see if we can rectify. And I'm hoping we can sit down with them and, and correct those things. But I feel at the end of the day, it, they would be beneficial to this village. So I'll, I'll uh, I will work on sitting down, getting with them and sitting down and discussing that with them. And I get back to the committee so we can sit down and discuss this.
Yes, sir. I will. Please keep us informed with that date. Um, because it's, it is now on the committee's desk and uh, keep us informed in that regards, okay? Thank you. All right, moving on down the agenda. Um, hold on, I lost my spot. Letter D, no, no, I'm sorry, letter E, the approval to extend the flock camera safety system, excuse me, beyond the trial period. And out of respect and out of the, the person who brought this to the table, I want to turn it over to trustee Robinson to introduce this topic. Or, or, or should we, I'm sorry, let's get a motion first and then uh, let's have trustee Robinson um, uh, present.
Uh, Mayor Bryant?
Trustee Robinson.
I like to make a motion for the approval to extend the flock cameras, camera safety system beyond the trial period on January the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Is there a second on the floor?
Just the, just the Jackson will second it.
Moved by trustee, it's been moved by trustee Robinson to approve the flock safety cameras beyond the trial period. It's been seconded by trustee Bruton and, and trustee Jackson. All right, um, trustee Robinson.
Yes, so uh, thank you, Mayor Bryant and Board. Uh, the flock camera safety system has been implemented um, in the village. We've had the opportunity to um, have a trial period with them and they have proven to be very effective. I did ask Chief David Shepherd to um, join us on the call. I sent the board, I forwarded you guys uh, two documents that Chief Shepherd shared with me in regards to just some of the activity that is going on. So Mayor Bryant, um, I am going to turn this over to Chief Shepherd so that he can um, give us the information and then I'm not sure if we have the capability to share. But are you able to share uh, the documents that he's asking us to share?
Yes, I can um, hold on one moment. Chief Shepherd, are you here?
Yep, I'm here.
There you go.
These lights are too bright. Nope, I need that one.
Hold on one moment. So we gotta upgrade our Zoom to the, the, to the business one. We gotta upgrade it to Chief Shepherd because if you can send me whatever you need to um, show and I can share it on the screen, or do we have, no, trustee Robinson, you sent that data.
You have it.
I have it. Let me share it on the screen. I'm sorry.
So Mayor, are we running out of time?
No, we just, I, I just, um, you know, I'm not, I don't really, I'm not, I don't think we got that right now on this, this level. We got the basic one, I think.
Okay.
Basically running out of time.
But I, 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 I don't, I don't know how to play with this right now, so I'm just gonna pull this up. Can someone give me an intro while I'm pulling this up?
Yeah, so the one, the one, um, the one thing that I wanted to say to the residents is that literally per household, it costs um, point zero three cents per household, uh, per day for the flock system. I think it came out to be about between like thirteen to fourteen dollars um, per household. Chief will be able to share, but the cameras have been very instrumental in solving uh, crimes that have recently happened in our own community with shootings, um, with some other murders that have occurred. Also, as far as connecting with other municipalities and we sent the data to show that we have um, cars coming that we have, um, cars coming through here that are wanted for other things in other municipalities. So we're helping keep the crime down, um, all around. So I asked Chief Shepherd to come so that he can, you know, talk to us a little bit about what flock has been doing for us, because they receive, um, the reports daily and are sharing the information. Chief Shepherd?
Okay. Good evening to everyone. So basically, uh, to sum it up, the flock camera system has been instrumental to what we have been doing here in Robbins. And I say that because, um, crime happens every moment. If you're not able to determine who was involved in that crime, then you're really at a loss in the beginning. Um, for all who doesn't understand how, how the flock system works. So basically, the nickname flock comes because there's a lot of cameras together, like a flock of birds. And what they're doing is, is they're constantly watching and recording the things that are coming in and out of different municipalities. So here in Robbins, we have cameras on, um, the east and west, or the north and south of each street as you enter or exit Robbins. Every single plate that enters or exit Robbins, twenty-four hours a day, is recorded on the flock system, and it's retained for a thirty-day period. So what happens is, is, um, essentially, like, there's an example that I was gonna show you. There was incident that took place, uh, there was a BMW that was utilized with a gas cap that was missing. So we were instantly able to go to flock. We got the call at, like, maybe, uh, four thirty-two, we went to flock at four thirty-six, we looked at that timeframe, and we were able to spot that BMW with the missing gas cap. We were able to pull the license plate, and we knew that vehicle was utilized in that, that incident. Had we not had that camera, you know how hard it would be to find a BMW with a missing gas cap? Next to impossible. Um, that is only part of what flock can do. What we then can do is we can tap in to the two hundred and one different cameras that we are connected to, and we were able to track that vehicle, and we were able to build, um, a little map of where that vehicle visits most frequent. And we knew where it came to rest at, so we know approximately what town it may be in now. And that allows us to know where crime is coming from, as well as where crime is going, once it's, once, I'm sorry, where someone is going, once crime is committed here in Robbins. Um, if you had the packets in front of you, you can see, I had a picture of the car in there. But more important, right now, we are sharing cameras with so many other municipalities. Burr Ridge, Cicero, Country Club, uh, Dalton, Frankfurt, um, Oak Forest, Richland Park, uh, let's see, what else we have? The Village of Lynnwood, we have, uh, Justice, uh, PD. There are so many other villages that we are sharing cameras with that utilizes the same system we do, and we're all working on the same type of network. So think about it, as the trustee told you, that basically, the flock system comes out to, um, point zero three cent per resident, per household here. And how do we come up with that number? Um, right now, from the US Census, in twenty-twenty, it estimated that there was a total of four thousand, I'm sorry, one second. Four thousand six hundred and twenty-nine individuals here in Robbins. This is the twenty-twenty census, the twenty-twenty-one census, information is not available. From that information, we were able to isolate that the, uh, there is one thousand five hundred and eighty-five occupied residential homes here in Robbins. So if we take the amount of residents that's occupied here, and we do simple, simple mathematics, basic math, it comes out to thirteen dollars and eighty-eight cents per year, per household for this system. So imagine, you're purchasing two hundred and one cameras, phoning thirteen dollars a year to know who's in your town, who, when they, when they come in, when they leave, if they do crime, how to track and trace them, to try to get it solved. That comes out to nearly a dollar and fifteen cents a month. It comes down to point zero three cents per day, so for less than a penny, every citizen here can have the ability to tap into two hundred and one cameras to help keep their family safe. We have been able to utilize this system in so many different ways. Um, even when we, a couple of months ago, when we had all of the gunfire, we, we were able to track the Maserati and, um, the Dodge Charger vehicles that was involved. We were able to, uh, tow those cars because Dalton found them. We were able to, um, when, um, there was a murder, uh, too, we were able to track those vehicles also, to see where those vehicles left, who was involved. Uh, we knew when the vehicle left our area, and then it drove over to, um, Blue Island, because it came to rest in Blue Island, and Blue Island has cameras, so we were able to see when it went over there. This is an invaluable tool to use. It is not to catch, don't get me wrong, it's not gonna solve every crime, I would never tell you that. But what I can tell you, that if you have a crime in your area, and you have nothing to start with, how do you solve it? And just for literally a, less than a penny a day, this gives you the offending vehicle right in the door at any time, at any moment, throughout your village, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We are actually utilizing cameras, um, people have tapped into our cameras from Tennessee, from Texas, from California, from Georgia. That's just how valuable this system is. I would say, um, it's almost next to impossible for us to operate without it, because then we would be left out. And we wouldn't wanna be the only municipality in the area left out. Why would we lock ourselves out of two hundred and one ways to try to solve crimes? And with that, if anybody have any questions, I can answer.
Chief Shepherd?
Yes.
That was very good, uh, that was very good report you gave on that. Um, my only question about it is, what is the, uh, network audit? Is that the other municipalities that tapped in? I seen that report, I just didn't understand it.
Yes, the network audit, what it is, is we, at any time that we can check and see, uh, anybody who's tapped into our network, as well as they can see if we tapped into theirs. Uh, this is only just a small sheet, uh, it only covers a thirty-day period. Unfortunately, the internet service here in the department will not allow me to print out a thirty-day network, because it is so much information. I kinda just wanted to give you all a screenshot of kinda what it does.
Okay.
Thank you for that. No problem.
Chief Shepherd?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Maxie, just, just a couple of questions, uh. I'm trying to get a feel for how, how this cameras relate, uh, how, the cameras in Blue Island. Let us know what's coming into Robbins, right? Or is that, I mean, I'm trying to see how they relate.
Okay, so for example, let's say that you are at home right now, and there was a crime that happened at the corner of your block. If someone is leaving the scene of the crime, they're gonna either exit out of Robbins to the one of three ways. One-three-nine, um, one, I'm sorry, one-three-seven over here on Claire, or they're gonna go over on, um, Kedzie. So, one of the ways, the, the camera's gonna catch you when you leave out. Now, the question is, is where did you go? Most of the time, we can go and we can tap a camera to say, okay, well, if they went up, um, Kedzie, then maybe they're going over to the next municipality. If that municipality has cameras, for example, Mariner Park or Blue Island, we can tap into their camera and follow that car to see possibly where it comes to rest at. And that's the value of the whole flock system. It's like a flock of birds, a flock of cameras, all working together. And remember, we only pay for eight cameras. The other cameras, we get free access to. So it's, it's, it's a maximus on the, the dollar, and it's really pennies that, that, uh, it costs. But the true value of it is, is to be able to solve that crime.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, no problem, sir.
Any other questions for the chief? Chief Shepherd, uh, once again, you and, you and, uh, DC Matt, not Malley, uh, DC Redmond. Formable shift, we appreciate the man and woman in the RPD for their services that they provide to us, thank you.
You're welcome, sir, no problem, and thank you to all.
Went out. Testing, testing, one, two, three, can y'all hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Alright, well, with that being stated, I think this is a, um, a, um, no-brainer. We must, uh, add any and every resource to public safety. Um, gearing up for the summer ahead, um, I don't, I'll, I don't really care about the price when it comes to saving lives and catching criminals. Um, so with that being stated, um, if there isn't any more questions, I'll entertain the roll call or the vote.
Well, Mayor Bryant, this is Trustee Jackson, I'd just like to say I initially voted against this. However, over the trial period, I've been convinced, uh, from the, especially in the, in the recent days, listening to Chief Shepherd, realizing that the village has been going through turmoil, a lot of shootings. And it's only best that, um, uh, a- and, and the village also has, uh, uh, we have a, a shortfall of police officers. So, um, this is an item that's probably, as I said, I did vote against it, I had skepticism. But I'm not a skeptic anymore, because the village needs this, and so I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, Trustee Jackson, you, you are, you made a great point. The cameras do serve, um, as like an extra set of eyes, considering the fact that we, you know, are working on our manpower still.
Yes.
Trustee Maxie here, uh, I, I would, I'm, I like, Trustee Jackson was skeptical in the past, but after hearing the chief explain it to much better detail than I had in the past, I'm, uh, I can go along with it.
Mayor Bryant?
Trustee Bruton?
I know this is a little off, uh, but when you add this with the eight cameras that we had, eight cameras, but you add that, and I know we already got four, it make me real optimistic, you know, for next summer, twelve cameras plus the flock cameras, you know, that we gonna have one of the safest communities. With Chief doing the things that he's doing, I'm excited.
Okay, and any other comments? If not, I can entertain, um, we can go to the roll call.
I'm sorry, Trustee Dyson had to leave, so we'll go with Trustee Maxie?
Yes.
Trustee Bruton?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Jackson?
Yes.
And Trustee Collier?
Yes.
Roll call.
Alright, so moved, um. I believe we got comments from the, no, is there anything else to come for the board?
Mayor, did I miss it? Uh, who put the motion on the floor?
Trustee Robinson. And the second by Trustee Jackson.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Bryant, there is one more thing, um, we need to be thinking about the caper system for the police department, the server with the information, just throwing that out there. They, um, sent us an email in regards to that, so that's something that we probably need to act on as soon as we can.
Thank you, thank you, and matter of fact, thanks for reminding me, I gotta send you a Zoom link. We actually meet with Calcom this Thursday at eleven on Zoom.
Oh, perfect.
Yes, so this would be a first opportunity for, um, the Bryant administration to really come united, uh, with Calcom, because we never, we just really got the full, full contract, um, several months ago. So, um, that's Thursday at eleven, and we, and, and, and the purpose of that meeting for the citizens is to, we hear you all's concerns that with Calcom, and, you know, you getting bounced around to di- different dispatches and things of that nature. That's the first one, and the second one is, um, making, before we get servers, before we get computers, before we start, um, buying these, these equipment and merchandise, um, let's sit down and see what Calcom can assist us on doing with resources, okay? So that's the main priority of that meeting. Um, anything else to come for the board?
Mayor Bryant?
Trustee Bruton?
Uh, while you speaking in terms of Calcom, when we get closer to making a decision, uh, I know you didn't get to come neither that time, when we, uh, went over there to their facility. I think it'd be nice to set something up where all the board could go over there and visit that facility, when it's getting close to us making a decision, is we go, go on that route, or is we gonna go a different route?
Well, Trustee Bruton, I actually, I've been shaking and moving, I've been over to that facility twice since being the mayor. And so, uh, but I do agree with that, I think we do need to have a tour for the rest of the board.
You?
Taking a move, man, Mayor Denton, man, that's, man, Trustee Max?
Yes, I know it wasn't on the agenda, but just, uh, can I, can we get an update on what's happening? And maybe I missed it down the line, can we get an update on what's happening with the three sixty cameras?
Yes, I reached out to Cleo Downs last week at the start of the year. Dan Franza has the documents. We sent over all the financial documents for the safety cameras. I'm waiting to hear back from their end. Um, you know, unfortunately, that, that, that holiday break, a, a lot of business don't get handled that much, you know? So, um, I will reach back out, but we did everything on our end for that, uh, process.
Thank you, Mayor.
No, thank you, Trustee. Anything else to come for the board? Comments from the citizens, okay? Without seeing none, hearing none, I, I'll entertain comments from the citizens. Um, if you want, you can unmute your mic, or you could put a comment in the chat, and we can address it from there. Alright, so, um, comments from the citizens. Give this some time, I'm gonna get, let it, let it sit for a minute. Moto G play, I think is, um, trying to connect. Yes, Ms. Echoes, you've been chatting, see, you, you, you found a loophole through the two minutes, you could be in that chatter all meeting. Comments from the citizens. Comments from the citizens. Alright, then, and hearing no comments from the citizens.
Okay, I would like to, this is Ms. Echoes, I'm done chatting, so I can say in person, Happy belated, Happy New Year to everybody, this was a fantastic meeting. And my hat is off to all of you. United we stand, divided we fall.
Happy New Year, Ms. Echoes, thank you. Alright, alright, any more comments for the citizens? Seeing, seeing none and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor Bryant?
Trustee Robinson?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, uh, this board meeting to our re- next regularly scheduled board meeting.
I'll second.
Moved by Trustee Robinson, second by Trustee Maxie to adjourn today's council meeting to our next regular scheduled council meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned, nine thirty-three. Maxie, you second it this time, but he's always in on that last motion to adjourn.
I'm not going for that. Not going for that, not this time.